Bob, as long as he got his ankle brace on.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands upon a nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Before the Waterworks Board meeting, we have a special presentation, a donation to the Civic Fund from NIPSCO.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Appreciate the council giving us an opportunity and a forum. Bob, thank you for setting that up. My name is Rick Kalinsky. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for NIPSCO, also a Sheroville resident and privileged to sit on the Board of Zoning and Appeals also for the town. You know, every year for the last five or six years, I would receive the flyer in the paper, or excuse me, in the mail about the Sheroville Civic Funds. And I'd look through that. And I've been owning charitable giving for NIPSCO in the service territory here for about nine years. And I kept thinking to myself, boy, I've never been asked. At NIPSCO, you get asked for a lot of donations, a lot of support. And I kept thinking to myself, I'd love to find an opportunity and a time to support this organization. And really no better time than right now, coming off the heels of, well, I don't think we're out of the water yet, right? But really starting to see the end of the light at the end of the tunnel of this pandemic. And you know, a lot of times when you have an opportunity to support people in need, you know, you think of some different communities sometimes, even sometimes our urban communities. But what I did and really enjoyed reading when I'd open that up yearly is, you know, all the support that this organization provides to Sheroville residents. You know, good people working hard can fall down at times and need some support and need some pickup. And that's what this organization does. And so today I'm here to present a check for $10,000 to the Sheroville Civic Funds. Proud to do it. I appreciate the opportunity Mr. Anderson gave me. And on behalf of NIPSCO, I wish you the best. Keep doing great things for the community that I'm proud to call home. So it's really a double edged sword for me. On behalf of NIPSCO, very proud to support. A little extra special for me being in my hometown. So Tom, thank you very much.
This is a very timely donation, you know, with what's been going on. You know, a lot of people think Sheroville is a very well-to-do community. It is, and it's a great community, but there's always some people who need help. And for over 60 years, the Sheroville Civic Fund has been there to try and help those people. And this is going to go a long way to help that. And we, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. It's a great donation and we're very proud to receive it from you. Thank you.
That one doesn't cash, but this one does.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. I would like to call to order the Waterworks Board meeting for June 9th, 2021 at 7:05 PM. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Hewitt.
Here.
Deputy Chief, Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Absent.
Niece Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Director Operations Jim Gorman.
Here.
Town Manager Robert Volkman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Mike Troxel, present.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Chief, I see over there, David Meyer. And Superintendent of our Parks John Novosich.
Here.
Sorry about that, gentlemen.
Thank you. The Waterworks Board consists of three members, Tom Schmidt, Kevin Conley, and myself, Robin Arvenitis. The first item on the agenda for the Waterworks meeting is the minutes of the May 12th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda is claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
There is an additional claim. We have item H is R&amp;R Yard Design for $12,292. This is coming out of various funds. That's all I have to add.
So move on claims then.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims pass, three to zero. Next on the agenda are reports. Are there any additional reports, Mr. Volkman?
No reports.
Are there any additional reports from council members?
None.
There is no old business. There is new business. Resolution 2021-1, a resolution to transfer funds within a category of appropriations.
Madam President, yeah, this is a resolution to transfer money out of our O&amp;M water accounts from one fund to another fund totaling, it'll be totaling $10,000, $20,000 there.
Madam President, move to approve Resolution 2021-1.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2021-1 passes three to zero. Is there any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. The time is 7:08 PM. We will bring Councilman Rob Getzloff and Caleb Johnson into the roll call for the Redevelopment Commission meeting. First item are the minutes of May 12th, 2021, public meeting. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, anything additional?
Not on this agenda, no.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the board.
So move on claims, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes five zero. We have a staff report regarding the annual presentation on Kennedy Avenue Economic Development Allocation Area, Plum Creek Economic Development Allocation Area, and Shops on Main Economic Development Allocation Area. Mr. Gorman?
Since these are financials, I'll defer to Mr. Troxel on this one. Thank you.
Mr. President, yes, this, as you stated in the title, is an annual presentation on our TIF districts we have in our community. I provided all of you with our 2020 Annual Report, which reflects the revenues received and expenses paid for the year 2020. And also including reports is our current fund balances in each of those areas. In the Kennedy Avenue area, currently we have $1,464,000, excuse me, $14,640,350.84 is our current balance in that fund. And our current fund in the Plum Creek is $748,523.96. And in the Shops on Main TIF District, we have about $1,130,620.95. These are reports that need to be done annually. And so I did present to you the 2020 Annual Report that has been uploaded to the Gateway software with the state of Indiana on that. Any questions on the reports or any I can assist with?
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Any additional staff reports?
No reports.
Okay, council members?
No report.
We have no old business. We'll get into new business here. Item A, Resolution 2021-2, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2022 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Shops on Main Allocation Area and all matters related thereto. Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Council President, Redevelopment President, we've, this is also something that needs to be done annually by code. And this is to determine the need for 2022 in order to collect the increment in each of these TIF areas. So this one being the Shops on Main Allocation Area, we will be receiving, as the worksheet shows, you know, over $830,000 for the year. But we have bond and principal interest payments to pay on that, which we will be able to pay all that money there. And also subsequent money from the Kennedy Avenue TIF District will help support that bond payment on that. We do meet the requirement that it's not over 200% that is out there. So we're at 73.86% of our estimated dollars we'll receive and what the money is going for on this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I motion to approve Resolution 2021-2.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Do we need to adopt or just approve?
Just approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Item B, Resolution 2021-3, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2022 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Plum Creek Precision Allocation Area and all matters related thereto. Mr. Troxel?
Again, this is similar to the last resolution. This is regarding our Plum Creek Precision Allocation Area. We're estimating to collect an increment about $200,000 in that area. And all that money will go towards any development and need for the Oak Street Development Area for that TIF district. So we'll use 100% of that allocation there towards that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Troxel?
Nope, no questions.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 2021-3 on the advice of our Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, Resolution 2021-4, a resolution of the Sheroville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2022 budget year determination for the need to capture incremental assessed valuation within the Kennedy Avenue Allocation Area and all matters related thereto.
Mr. President, this, as you stated, is the Kennedy Avenue Allocation Area. And we're estimating close to $3.8 million in increment to be collected in the year 2022. And we do have bond and interest payments to make on that of $822,760. And we're also looking at spending approximately a little over $1.4 million in some of the acquisition costs for Kennedy Avenue and other services that are needed this next year for those monies we do receive. And we do meet the qualifications that were set at a percentage of 169.16 on that.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-4.
We have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes five zero. That concludes our new business. At this time, I will entertain business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none? This meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Sheroville Utility Board Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 9th at approximately 7:14 PM. First item on the agenda is the minutes, I'm sorry, roll call would be the same as the redevelopment meeting. Next item is the minutes of the May 12th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions approved. Next items, claims. Any additional claims for utilities, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, Mr. President. Item J would be also what I stated on the waterboard. It's R&amp;R Yard Design for $12,292. And this is coming out of various funds.
Thank you.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Gorman, on utilities? Mr. Hewitt? Hey, council members on utilities?
No.
No reports. At this time, we have no old business on utilities, no new business. At this time, I'll open it up to the floor. Any comments on the floor regarding utilities? Comments on the floor regarding utilities? Meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the town council.
Call the town council meetings are ordered at 7:17.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel? Yes, Mr. President. Item D, D, on this agenda here would be the same one, R&amp;R Yard Design for $12,292, coming out of various funds.
Move to approve claims, Mr. President.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reports, Mr. Gorman, any reports?
No reports. Mr. Patterson, any reports?
Sure. The Sheriff's Fire Department ran 306 miles a day. And we had 264 EMS-related orders for a fire.
Chief Sormas?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple items to report. June 18th, we're going to have our coffee with a cop. That's going to be hosted at Sophia's this year. That's 650 West US 30. It starts at 8:00 AM till 10:00 AM. And if anybody could come, neighbors and police officers can come have a cup of coffee with the police officers and just have a conversation. There's no forum on that. Just open conversations with our department and get to know our officers and voice their concerns. And also we have our summer camp for kids. The applications are going out June 11th. We're starting advertising June 11th for Sheroville residents only. And that'll give an opportunity for kids in the ages between 10 and 13 to get some experience with police K-9 demonstrations, fingerprint learning, station tour, and children's self-defense. There'll be a lot of learning and fun. And we'll provide lunch for all the kids there for those four days. The camp is actually July 27th, 28th, 29th.
Mr. Novosich?
Yes, thank you. Tonight kicks off the 29th Annual Shalt, celebrate Sheroville Fest. And we have more than coffee there. We got beer, band, bingo, 25 food vendors, new Carnival operator, ride special every night, parade at 5 o'clock on Saturday, and then we finish up Sunday. A lot of good bands, Dick Diamond, Mr. Funny Man Friday, Echoes of Pompeii, Saturday Nicole Jamero on Sunday. So yeah, hope to see everyone there and hope for good weather. And thanks to all the departments for really helping out with the setup, Public Works, Fire, Police being there. It's really always a team effort, you know, with all the other departments besides us. Really appreciate that this year. So great layout. Hope to have a good fest.
Mr. Simstad? Mr. Hewitt? Mr. Volkman? Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I will open the floor for public comment regarding agenda items. Are there any comments regarding agenda items? Being on our hearing tonight, we will close the floor. There is no new, old business under new business. Consider appointing to the South Shore Convention and Visitor Authority a three-year term expiring June 31st, 2023. The person that we have chosen is Larry Tucker.
Mr. President, move to appoint Mr. Larry Tucker to the South Shore Convention and Visitor Authority. This is a three-year term expiring June 30th, should be 2023.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consider donation to Lake Central Education Foundation Incorporated, $1,000. President? As I sit on the floor, first of all, Lake Central Education Foundation, I would like to step on this podium. And I would like to inform you that if you have a representative of the president of Lake Central Education Foundation here tonight, Luis Calvado, she has information to pass out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anything you would like to say?
Luis, do you want to talk about Lake Central Education Foundation, or you want me to? Oh, well, I'll just say, just from my time on the board, this organization is a organization of citizens and teachers who fundraise in order to generate money to contribute to grants requested by teachers to do special events or special curriculums for their students. So for instance, if a literature, English teacher wants to bring in an author who's written a book and bring them in to speak to the whole school or to speak to the students, they can ask for a grant. Our organization would review that grant. We would grant them the money to pay the stipend or whatever it is to bring in that author. They bring in the author, they sign books for these kids. It's a great organization to bring special events, special curriculums to the students of Lake Central that unfortunately just aren't in the normal run-of-the-mill budget that we can help to provide for them. So Luis has been on the board much longer than I have, and she's a teacher or was a teacher at Lake Central, recently retired. She has much more information about.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for entertaining the Lake Central Education Foundation. We really appreciate these minutes. Your agenda is packed, so thank you. Thank you also for considering to donate to the education foundation. And if the flyer that's the white one does show you some pictures of some of the things that the teachers very creatively have put together. And our grants are small. They range from $300 to $500. Once in a while, we will provide a seed grant. And like for the uni library, we were able to provide like $1,000 or a little bit more than that to that function that came out of Lake Central so that we can have like a bookmobile that goes around and travels, providing more reading. And this year, we were really excited. Last year, because of COVID, it didn't happen. You can see some of the ways we do raise funds and money. And like I say, our grants are small. The teachers do extra. They are provided an opportunity to receive their grant money and a little notoriety because our teachers do work hard for the students. And thank you again for considering that at a school board meeting. And we also raise money, as you will look at the gold flyer, and it's through the license plate program. And we are very excited to say that in our tri-town area, as we serve Dire, Sheroville, and St. John, that our license plate program earns the most out of all the foundations in northwest Indiana. So those of you that might have these license plates on your cars, thank you so much because that's just so wonderful. Susan Schweitzer is a co-president with me. And we also have Vice President, Grants Chairman, Melody Wolf. And Mike Selgin is our treasurer and our board member. So I just wanted to say thank you. We do appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. President, move to make the donation to the Lake Central Education Foundation Incorporated in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four, one. Approve the purchase of property located at 9400 Clark Place, a property in the amount of $150,000. The Pennsy Trail authorized the town manager, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to complete the transaction. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is the last part of Phase Four of the Pennsy Trail located on the southeast portion of town. The, we're looking for authorization for you guys to purchase this property. Looking to finalize the whole deal. Mr. Austin's been working on it. And this is what, we made a deal with the property owners for $150,000.
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. President, motion to approve the purchase of property located at 9400 Clark Place in the amount of $150,000 for the Pennsy Trail and authorized town manager, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to complete this transaction.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider request from the Park Board to serve beer and wine at the following event, Sheriff of Police Department versus Sheriff of Fire Department Fall Brawl at Roarman Park on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021.
I didn't know if you wanted to do it because it was from the parks. Motion to approve.
Second.
Request from the Park Board to serve beer and wine at the following event, Sheriff of Police Department versus Sheriff of Fire Department Fall Brawl, Roarman Park, Saturday, October 23rd, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Consider acceptance of donations of $1,350. Mr. Troxel? Thank you, Mr. President. Donations came in through the month of May. The K-9 program from Iron Pack Brotherhood received $200 in K-9 donations. The National Night Out Donation Fund received multiple donations. Toast and Jam, $200. Maki Insurance, $100. DDM Trucking Inc., $100. DNR Auto Repair Inc., $100. Adams Automotive, $100. UAC Truck Services, $100. Total to date, National Night Out donation, 700. The donation to the VIPS program, Mr. Dennis Miller donated $50. The Parks and Rec Miscellaneous Donation Fund, the Fire Baseball, this is reimbursement for the pitching mound, total $400. Total donations for the month, $1,350. Pleasure of the board.
Move to accept donations.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Councilman Caleb?
I would like to make a motion to add an agenda item, which would be item F. It would be consider request for donation from the Sheroville Baseball League. We have some representatives here today.
Okay. Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Christian Flores. I'm the current president of Sheroville Baseball. Just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to come to present to you this evening. With me tonight, I have our league treasurer, Bob Rording, who has worked closely with Mr. Troxel to facilitate this meeting tonight, as well as I have my vice president, Dan Delange, who kind of put our capital projects plan together. So these two gentlemen have a very good handle on. So these two gentlemen have a very good handle on kind of what we're looking to achieve, so I will pass the mic over to them and they can answer any additional questions that you have, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Good, good evening. Um, so what I've, I've, I've met with Mike, um, and we were all here last October with you guys where we, uh, shared our capital improvements project. Um, and then Mike reached back out saying we need to do a little bit more. So we built an entire package to provide you guys, and possibly a process that you guys can use in the future. So if you refer to the table of contents, I list out everything that I've written here. So we have our donation ladder that we are, we're requesting funds up to ninety-five thousand dollars that we will do to, uh, handle a lot of different projects at Sheriffville Baseball. Sheriffville Baseball has been around for fifty years, um, you're starting to see that a little bit here. There, besides this capital improvement, there's still a lot more that we need to do. The top of the chart, we're just trying to get, to get, to get a place to play baseball. And even more, we, uh, a lot of families build relationships through this organization. We, we draw in a lot of visitors from other towns that spend funds, uh, at local establishments and hotels and restaurants and all of that, and we are trying to keep this facility up to pace. You know, I'm not here to try to make it like Crown Point. Crown Point, they received some private donations and, you know, that's, that's the top right now. We're just trying to provide another fifty years for the, the youth of this community. So during summers, they have a place to play baseball. So we can go through some of it, um, I'll, I'll go through the different things we came up with, me, um, our accountant and Mike. It's part of the process, so we have the donation ladder that I have in, included, the capital improvements project where we list off what we're trying to do. From our accountant, saying that, you know, he's gone through the financials, everything looks okay. The IRS determination letter, saying that we're a five oh one C three. Um, I've implemented a cash management policy this year. I joined, I've been in Sheriffville Baseball, I don't know, probably ten years with my stepson and now my other son's in the org, or organization. And last October, I became the treasurer. So my goal is to make it better tomorrow than what it is today, not, not just for us, but for the whole community for years to come. So I've put this cash management policy together and we are implementing it so that we have some cash controls on our operations. And then I put in our current financial statements as May thirty-first, which is the last reconciled period. And then I put in, uh, there's a search engine online through the IRS where you can look up private organizations and pull up all their nine nineties in the past, which is a filing that, um, five oh one Cs, five oh one C threes have to do each year. So I know it's a lot of information, but I think more is, you know, better. So with the capital improvements project, one of the big items, and I know everybody sees it when you drive down Roorman Road, our front fencing there, that the fencing is literally falling over, right? So, um, we're trying to replace that in the near-term future. Just driving down Roorman Road, it'll look better by replacing that fence. And then in this couple, capital improvements project, I also went through some of the items Dan highlighted back in October, showing some of the things that we have accomplished since late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-one. One of the big items was all the roofs of the concession stand, dugouts, garage, all that's now been replaced.
Maybe if you could take a step back, first time, talk about kind of where this whole capital improvement project came from. So, uh, when we, when we started putting this together, obviously last year was a little bit problematic for us with COVID year. Registration numbers were down, we had to figure out what, you know, what, what, what we could do to kind of keep everybody around. We started looking at numbers, started looking at, uh, some trends in, in around the area. We've, uh, identified that there is definitely some erosion from, uh, from the town of Shererville to where our best assumptions, based on, um, towns that surround us, is that people are leaving us, our program, for other programs like St. John Youth Baseball, Crown Point Baseball, because of basically their, their facility, okay? St. John's got a newer facility that was basically put together by All-Tall Homes, Crown Point's got a lot of private donorship money coming in, uh, from the D and Y program. So we knew we had to do something in order to keep the town, uh, uh, baseball program going strong in, in the town of Shererville. So that's, that's kind of where this was driven from and the reason we were, uh, we continued our, our passion to kind of make it better. So a lot of the things that we put in the capital improvement project was more about aesthetics, right? What could we do to make the average, uh, town person want their, want their child to play here or want their grandchild to play at Shererville? So when we put the whole package together, that's what our intent was. Um, you know, Sheriffville has a strong standing, um, you know, record for good baseball playing. The, uh, we get a lot of people that, that move over to, to our program based on, uh, just the way our, our coaches and our board kind of handle ourselves in the, uh, tri-town community. And, uh, you know, so, so we want to continue that image and, uh, their reputation within the, or within our, within our town and area. So that's, that's really what it comes down to. We, the, the, the meeting that we had with John, uh, in October in the, in the Parks Department was a great meeting. We, we had big plans for this year. Uh, we had hoped that we were going to have these, uh, major tournaments and, uh, you know, we, we still, we just got done with our Memorial Day tournament, which went off extremely successful for us. We, uh, in, included some new pieces to that. We've got two state tournaments where we're bringing in, uh, people from all over the, uh, state of Indiana, as well as, uh, another, what they call the, uh, Ohio Valley Regional Tournament, which is going to also bring in people from, uh, multiple states, which essentially brings people to the town of Shererville to utilize lodging and, and some of the restaurants in this town as well. So that's just a plot, an added plus for, uh, for the town of Shererville. And, uh, so, so that's, that's kind of where we're going with it, and, and John and, uh, his group, they, they worked diligently with us to kind of create a plan to hopefully utilize the, uh, softball fields at Roorman. Uh, we found out that, you know, because of COVID twenty, um, there was a lot of, of, uh, I'll call it credits that were out that weren't used because all of a sudden they can't, there was a bunch of tournaments that got canceled. So all of a sudden, all these tournaments popped up for twenty twenty-one, registration numbers kind of went down, they started, you know, spreading out. Uh, tournaments got canceled in numerous towns. So, um, we hope, the conversation that we've had with John and the Parks Department, we can kind of build off that moving into the, into the, uh, next few years. We think that we can generate a lot of income and a lot of use and, uh, you know, public, uh, you know, perception of, of, for the town of Shererville. So we think it's going to be a good thing moving forward. And, and like I said, I, I appreciate everything that John and his group did, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
So pretty much what Dan was going over, in doing this though, year after year, we're going to need a little help. You know, we're doing everything we possibly can, but the complex needs some work to be done. And all the money that it generates is recycled back into projects every year that we identify. And with it being fifty years old, you're going to have things that pop up just out of the blue. Like we put in here the sprinkler well project, that came out of nowhere. All of a sudden, our wells stopped pumping, our sprinklers aren't working, so that was prior number one. We had to fix it because no water, grass isn't going to look good, no one's going to want to play baseball there. So we've highlighted things to make the complex better, and there is more. I guarantee you, there is more that needs to be done there, and we hope to do it over time. You know, but in doing so, we need help, we're doing our best. And in my view, we're trying to help the community in doing so. My kid's ten, I mean, he's going to be done in four years, you know, possibly, hopefully play at Lake Central. But I'm not here for my son, I'm not here for their, their son, I'm here for a bigger picture. And if it, if it doesn't start happening soon, it's, it's going to be really difficult without a mass overhaul at once. So we laid out different projects to help, help, help the complex overall. Like I said, when you drive by, that fence is falling over, or we have some drainage issues on fields that need to be fixed. Our parking lots are pretty, pretty, pretty nasty. And just some of our netting and to protect the individuals within our complex.
I mean, the ability that the top Shererville has essentially to host large tournaments based on where, geographically, where, uh, you know, where Roorman Park is and where Shererville, where our fields are at, nobody in, say John can't do it, Crown Point can't do it, Dyer can't, no, no, not three of those towns can do it. Sheriffville has the capability to host major, major events, bring in large amounts of, of revenue, and not just from a baseball standpoint, but obviously from the, the lodging and the restaurant piece. So that's, that's kind of what we're trying to think big picture. Obviously, we have, you know, short-term goals of, uh, one, two-year, which we, we've accomplished a big part of that. And then, uh, you know, five-year, ten-year goals outside of that. So, uh, definitely appreciate the time that you guys have given us tonight.
We, we hear you, we, we've seen this proposal, we've looked at it, we've talked about it. I, I'm just one guy and I, I'm, I'm inclined to help you, I want to help you. I do have, um, some concern, just, I guess, I, I looked through this briefly and, and I see operating loss, you know, of income. That, are, are you guys able to sustain?
So that, that operating loss right there, it's, a lot of it is because it's recycled funds. So it's the roofing project that happened over this past year that all the expenses came in during this cycle. So that is what you're seeing right there.
Sure.
If we're not operating at a loss, if we're not putting money, it, it depends on how much money we put back into it, right? So we also need to keep a, we kept like a COVID cushion last year going into this year because we were unsure of the future and what baseball was going to be like this year. So now it's time to start spending some of it to help our facility. So yeah, you're, you're going to see it as a loss, but it's not because it, it, it was a cash reserve per se.
So, so if we, if we as a council agree to contribute towards one of these projects or more of these projects, uh, and, you know, but not all of it, are you guys able to complete the rest of the, fund completing the rest of the projects? Say we, we want to match you or something like that.
Sure.
On these projects, are you able to do that?
Um, we do have a cash reserve where we can use some, some projects might not just get done yet and just might be punted a little bit. Um, and we continue to try to fundraise with organizations around the area and try to generate more income. But we do have a cash reserve from COVID that some of that can be recycled and plan to be recycled to help the complex. So the answer to that's yes, we can.
Well, you know, I, I've been on the board for twenty-two years and I know that through the years, we have always helped Sheriffville Baseball.
Sure.
I don't think there was ever a time when we, we, we would deny you. You guys do great work, work, I commend you guys for, you know, taking children and teaching them how to play ball and be competitive and everything else. And I remember when we had the big, uh, Ripken, uh, tournaments here, it did, it brought in a lot of money for the town of Shererville. And, uh, that's always a good thing for the town and, and a good thing for you guys. We're going to, I mean, I, I'm only one vote myself and, and, and we definitely want to help you. Uh, and, and the town, I think the town of Shererville will always be behind you one hundred percent. Unfortunately, we can't give you the whole amount of money that you need, but we certainly can give, you know, something to contribute and, and hopefully people, the press will put something out there for the, for the baseball and, uh, say that, you know, people in this community can give personal donations to you guys. Cause you do, you do a tremendous amount for the youths here in, in Shererville, so I thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'd like to echo everything you said, Rob, and, and I was out at your tournament this past weekend over Memorial Day. Well, well, it's been a lot of years since I was at Sheriffville Little League, my son's thirty, but, um, it's been a lot of years. But, um, you guys were well organized, um, the teams, you know, the sportsmanship seemed to be really good. And I, I have to commend all the work that you guys do out there. It's, uh, you guys are, you've done a really good job.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm also here to, uh, help you guys out as much as we can.
I'd like to commend you also, being in youth sports for thirty years, it's a uphill battle, always.
Yeah, my son was part of Sheriffville Baseball and he enjoyed it, I helped coach a little bit, umpired a game, didn't get killed. It was a pretty good experience, I appreciate the due diligence that, that you've put together here, uh, you know, well-prepared. Mr. President, um, I would propose or make the motion that we make a contribution, um, toward the front facade fencing project in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred with a restriction where this will be a donation where next time you can come back to us would be three years from now. Um, you know, for any other additional requests, financial request. That's my, my motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second, is there any other discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Are, are you guys, I, I know on your report, I, have you had contact with the fencing company? Will you be able to turn that over to help you out immediately, like it says, in a couple of weeks, or?
Well, we would probably have to reach back out to them.
Yeah.
To see what their timeframe is now, but at the time when we initially put it together, that was the timeframe.
I mean, how's the supply chain issue for, you know, a, a chain link fence here, you know, versus a traditional, you know, home, you know, wood fence? I think there's a lot more wait time.
Yeah, right.
You know, for the, okay. So in terms of handling, um, Mr. Troxel, should we pay directly? Do we make the contribution to Sheriffville Baseball? There, there's a couple of different ways that the council can, can approach this. You know, you can make a direct donation to the Sheriffville Boys Baseball in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred dollars. You can wait and see if the, if the bid changes somewhat, you know, maybe there's some money they had to put into. You can also, uh, whoever the contractor is, we can, you can make the agreement in your, uh, motion here that the thirteen thousand three hundred goes right towards the vendor too and gets paid that way and they pay the balance. So there's a couple of different ways that can be done in your, uh, motion. Okay.
I, I like that latter proposal, you guys okay with that? If we pay whoever the vendor is, I mean, we pay them direct?
Right, I don't, as long as it gets done.
That's what I want to.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, when, when we looked at the fencing facade project, uh, you know, our main intent was trying to help out additional, you know, Sheriffville contractors. So obviously we reached out to, uh, um, the fencing companies, yeah, Prius on, uh, you know, helping us out. So a lot of that information came from them. Uh, you know, obviously anything that we can do to, to assist other Sheriffville, um, you know, owners is where we're looking.
This contribution is going toward Sheriffville families.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, with their taxpayer dollars.
Right.
I look at it as taxation with representation, so they're seeing a return. And, and the work that was done with Roorman Park was outstanding, and I think the two will complement each other.
Sure. And I'd actually reach out to Mike to see who was used for all the fencing at Roorman as well.
Right. Okay, well, I amend my motion, if you want to resecond.
I'll, I'll second, uh, the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any more discussion? There are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. President. Caleb. I have a second, uh, addition that I'd like to make to the agenda today. Uh, Lake Central, uh, girls softball are going to state for the championship. Um, I, I'd ask that we could send off them with a, a little well-wishing. could send off them with a a little well wishing and uh I was hoping that we might videotape something so that I could send that to them. Robbie, good. So I'll I'll say something and then we'll all say good luck.
All right.
After I say something. Lake Central Girls Softball, we wish you well going to uh state. Uh we know that you are going to compete. The town of Sheriffville, the town council, the whole town as a whole here today at our meeting. We wish you well and uh good luck, no matter what the results. Enjoy this time.
Go Lady Indians.
Go LC. Go LC. Go LC. That was nice.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That was good.
You're welcome, Mr. Caleb.
Just making sure you recorded.
Before uh I go to the floor, there's a gentleman here tonight that uh this is his last meeting. And uh he's been doing these meetings for 42 years. Um Mr. Hewitt started his employment with the town of Sheriffville on May 1st, 1979. He worked at the wastewater treatment plant, holding several positions, including the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Mr. Hewitt worked at the water waste treatment plant through June of 1994. And in June of 1994, Mr. Hewitt transferred to the Public Works Department. He has held several positions in the Public Works Department and once again, moving up the ranks. He was named Director of Public Works in January of 2005 and he still holds that position. Tonight, we want to congratulate him and wish him bet- his best in his new chapter of life. And we commend you, Mr. Hewitt, for everything, your dedication and all your hard work that you have given to this town that we all call home. So thank you very much.
This this really wasn't necessary, but it is appreciated. Uh many ups and downs over the 42 years I've been with the town. I was really hoping to just kind of fade into the shadows and and uh be one of the audience from here on out. And I do thank you. I thank this council and many of the past councils that I've worked with. Uh Bob Volkman has been a friend and mentor to me over the past uh, what, 23 years that he's been my direct supervisor. Uh it's 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 been just a great experience being here. Uh couldn't be happier to end my career here on this note. Uh I am not leaving town. I will be here. There are many things that are going on that I have a a lot of knowledge on. I I'm not walking out the door. I'll be here for all the help you need on those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
And uh after the meeting there, in the next room, there will be some cake and coffee uh for Jeff's retirement. At this time, I will take any uh public comment from the floor. Any public comment from the floor? Any public uh public comment from the floor? Hearing none. This uh meeting is adjourned. Thank you. And uh don't forget to have some cake.